For Tuesday, August 1st, 4:30 PM. It's to discuss our 2023-24 fiscal year budget. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
The motion.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? 4-0. Mayor's report?
No report.
All right. Council reports? Anybody?
No report.
No report, no report. Okay. We'll move to public agenda, citizens comments. Total allotted time, 45 minutes. If you speak, come to the podium, sign in, state your name. Anyone on my left, your right. Anyone on my right, your left. Anyone in the back? Okay, citizens comments are closed. We'll move to policy agenda. Gary?
Subject matter of the meeting is to discuss the 2023-2024 departmental budgets.
All right. Mayor, Mike, y'all have anything? Do y'all want us to just pick up where we left off?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Let me begin by just giving you two numbers for the record. As the budget sits today, the revenue for the general fund is $72,219,784. And expenses for the departments is $76,824.87. So, $72 million in revenue, $76 million in expenses. That's where we sit today.
That's...
Say the last one again, Mike.
I didn't say just department.
Mike, is that the revenue is $72, too?
Seventy-two.
What's our expenses?
And expenses for the departments is 76. That's a $2.4 million, almost $2.5 million gap.
So, that is the proposed budget?
That's as we stand. I just wanted, as we stand.
Okay.
And I would recommend, Council President, that since we gave the police and fire a lot of time last time in here, let's get started with one of the other departments.
Yeah, we're gonna start with Public Works. Does that work for everybody? All right. Billy, you wanna come up? George, we'll start with you. If you have any questions, start on our left and work this way.
Now, if you have your books, I would call your attention to the departmental expense budget. There are two pages. And the Public Works budget is on that second page. And they see the breakout on personal services, supplies, sanitation, and capital outlays. Shows a budget number of $13,629.107. If y'all are tracking, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And behind the department budget is a sheet that shows you the staffing. And it shows the staffing for Public Works, year-over-year budget at minus one. One body less than that was a year ago in the budget. And behind the tab for Public Works, you'll find a tab that tells you, a page that tells you the capital outlay request. So, the floor is yours, Mr. Director.
What's the total salary you have for Public Works? And how many employees do we have in Public Works? Full-time people?
Right now, I'm two people short as far as the, every day. I keep a track of this every day.
Say that again?
I keep a track of this every day, every week, every month. Right now, I'm showing 20 people short in Public Works because I keep a tally on it. And that's per what they show in Munis every day. Now, we just hired a couple guys for the streets and drainage department. We still short in the utilities, and we still short another crew and a half for Public Works.
You said you didn't show it?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty.
On the multicolored sheet, Councilman, on the multicolored sheet that has the staffing for Public Works, it shows that 54 bodies onboard, 20 vacancies for a total of 74 in the budget. And then you see for 23?
Is this sheet?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, right now, George, I've got about 90 people according to my figures. 22 short.
So, being 20, well...
We don't have enough people, obviously. Do we have enough equipment?
No.
And one of the big thing that we need to help promote things done faster?
Sir?
What are the things we need to do, equipment-wise? People can handle that, we could get that thing done.
If I can get what's on the budget, what I proposed, if I can get the proper equipment, then I can do more with less people. I have in the budget plugged in 144-inch zero-turn mower. I have a 12-foot bat wing that I can put behind a tractor and cut larger areas a lot faster without having so many people in one's place to cut that area.
So, just like our shield, you had a 12-foot mower, one person could do the whole job?
Yes, sir. Yeah, two people. One person going in front of him, picking up the paper, and weed eating around the poles and the signpost and stuff like that. And he can come right behind him and cut that in a short period of time.
So, is this a new request? You never had one of those before?
Yes, sir. I never had one. That's what I'm looking at, that type of equipment that's gonna help us do more with less.
And then, you've been having a lot of contract workers. How much money are you putting in the budget for that? To get things done?
I think last year, we had about a half a million in there for the repair, replace pro contract.
Because obviously, we can't hire anybody at the rate we paying. So, we either have to increase the rates or do more contract workers.
Believe it or not, we've hired some people.
What? What was that again? Say that again?
Believe it or not, we've hired some people.
Speak into the mic like that. I can hear you now.
But we have hired some people. They're young people. We don't know if we're gonna keep them, you know, because it's a very dirty job.
Is that mostly grass cutters and ditch cleaners?
Yes, sir. Mostly grass cutters and repair people in the utility section. Takes a special kind of person. In fact, today, we was just out there in Woolmarket tackling a 16-inch water main break, which it broke on its own. It was in a bind, and it cracked the bell. And we was in the process of getting it done. And I had to call a contractor because it's too much of a bind. So, he's gotta cut a section out and put two sleeves and a piece of pipe in and get it done.
Yeah, and stuff like that's gonna happen in terms of running a city.
Constantly.
Yeah, it's gonna happen constantly. That's nothing new at Port.
Another contractual services in the Public Works budget shows a budget of $806,000 in fiscal year '23. Shows a budget of $896,000, which is an increase of $90,000 in this year's budget. We have not yet added to the budget for the suggested contract for ditch cleaning. We're still waiting for numbers. And that's a note to carry over, and we'll pick that up in the budget.
Along the line, George, you were talking about contractual services. I think this, you may not have this piece of paper, but it's spread throughout here. We increased the contractual service from 4.3 million to 5.713, about $1.003,000, to accommodate some of those things we can't hire, what we need to do.
What was that number, 5.1?
Contractual services went from 4.352 million to 5.713 million. That's a 1.652 increase. Oh, yeah, 1 point.
Is that all the departments?
No, that's just Public Works. And that's that water department.
When you pay the contract workers, what are you paying them? $15, $16 an hour?
It varies. It varies. I mean, you're paying what you need, based on the job you do. And some of it's bid, some of it's can be top to bottom, and some of these other folks that we're looking at. But the ditch cleaning crew and some of those things are what's on our mind. But, you know, you gotta get it done. And between Billy Ray and Parks and Rec, we've got some things done. You seen on Highway 90, and we just, you know, put the resources where it is. But that is an increase in contractual services in that department, as well as the waters and sewer. What was the increase in that?
Okay, George, do you have any other questions for Billy?
Go ahead.
Okay. Dixie, do you have anything? Robert? Okay. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I've, it looks like across the board, we're budgeting less for fuel. I mean, that's true of all departments, I think, or just about all the departments. Is that accurate? Do you anticipate using less fuel? Or is that based on fuel prices a year ago when they were four bucks a gallon? Okay, good guess, Kenny.
Plus, Paul, we've done away with our natural gas because we don't have any vehicles hooked up on propane no more. The only thing that we have over there is two forklifts that has 30, 35-gallon tanks. They take off and go refuel when needed.
Right. And Mayor, I talked, and Mike, I'd mentioned to you, maybe looking at some electric vehicles, particularly electric vehicles that don't leave the city limits, maybe look at purchasing a few of those.
Looking at a lot of them.
Not necessarily trucks would need charging stations for that. Are we still considering that? We still looking at that?
And a couple of projects, we're looking at charging stations, and a little bit more to it than just, you know, the vehicles and some of the ongoing investments.
Right.
We still have those numbers, and if we can juggle capital items, I think we kicked around about two or three electric vehicles per department in the initial phases of it.
Mayor, we've got an ongoing discussion with Mississippi Power on this. And we have, we've gotten a quote from the Ford dealers to install charging stations. They were really pressing us hard to get them done. But I can't get yet, I still can't get any pricing on the vehicles. So, we're a timeout right now.
Right.
Because we, until we can find out the pricing on the vehicles and availability, I don't want to build charging stations for vehicles that we don't have yet.
But we're still considering that. And I don't know enough about the federal grants, but I know that there's gonna be billions available nationwide in grants for electric vehicles and that kind of stuff. So, we work with Mississippi Power, I think, as you said we're speaking with. So, I understand that. Okay. In the signs division, I guess it signs, that's doubled from $50,000 last year to $100,000?
Yes, sir. That's because of the new paint machine that we got.
Machine, I saw that. Okay.
Because we gotta buy more material.
Okay. And let's see, on the following page, under other professional services, it's dropping from $25,000 to $7,000. And I'm wondering, we must be discontinuing some sort of services. This is gonna be 01611-6432. I don't know which division it is. Under services and charges, it's gonna be on page three of the Public Works binder here. Other professional services, I'm wondering what we're gonna do without that we used to have?
Well, I think that's something to do with our uniform services that we haven't made a final decision on, whether we're gonna go back with the same, or we're just gonna buy a certain amount of sets and then give it to them so that we won't have to be charged for the services of the cleaning or of the uniforms.
So, employees would be cleaning their own?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that, Diana, does that make sense? Is that accurate? I mean, makes sense to me, I'm assuming.
In fiscal '23, we added money to that line item to hire temporary employees that we're not planning to hire in '24.
Gotcha. Okay.
Because all the money is in the salaries and wage line.
It's loss of temporary employees, okay.
We did a resolution at some point in time in '23 to move that money there.
Okay. And then, under the same section of services and charges, it's gonna be account number 6472, which is community relations. I was just wondering, what kind of community relations work occurs in Public Works?
The dumpsters and the portlets for Mardi Gras and...
Gotcha. Thank you. Under account number 6646, street sweeping services. I know we publish that schedule at the beginning of each month on the Public Works webpage. If somebody, if somebody could get to me, I'm just particularly interested in my ward, roughly how many times a year, each year, they roll through, roll down some of these streets? It's not every street, but like Pass Road or in Edgewater Park. Somebody could get that to me, I'd appreciate it. Then, account number 6649, other contractual services, that's increasing by 90,000. What are we adding that we didn't have before?
That's for the lease of the lights for Mississippi Power. They were in electricity in '23, and we moved it to contractual services in '24. I actually think I'm gonna move them one more time to easement lease instead, to keep that account more with outsourced...
Okay.
Labor work jobs.
Thank you. On the next page, account number 6689 deals with software licensing and maintenance. Last year, the budget was zero. This year, it's 36.5. I know, okay, well, I know that one year, we kinda pulled software out of everybody's budget and I think put it under the administration budget. And it looks like that we're farming some of this stuff out to the departments again.
In '24, software will go to every department.
Okay. So, it's no longer consolidated as it was in the past? Would that be accurate? Okay. And the term under recurring capital outlay, the term direct purchase? I'm unfamiliar with that. I'm unfamiliar with a lot of things. Direct purchase happens to be one of them. Says machinery, equipment, direct purchase. And that's being increased from $613,000 to a little less than a million.
That's just regular capital outlay that does not have a lease attached to it.
Okay. Thank you.
It's in the front, it's in the front part of your book by each department, under the capital projects tab.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. I don't know what division this is. It's the department numbers 01632, salaries and wages, which is account number 6010. That's increased by $284,000. So, it looks like we're increasing...
In '23, we moved the positions that were vacant to 6649, that we had to hire outsourced to get the job done.
Okay.
We don't budget for them in both places. We put the money in one spot and then move where it's needed.
Gotcha. And I notice on page six, under sanitation services, the utility authority is dinging us for an increase of 1.2 million. And I would assume, I'm on page six, Diana, on Department 01672, account number 6010, excuse me, above that, 6644, that 1.2 million, is that the garbage?
Yes.
Fee increase we're anticipating, okay?
On track on October 1.
Gotcha. And then, on the next page, I just have a couple of questions. I know I spoke with Mr. Allen about the Goose Point Lakeview Outfall Drain Pipe, and that needs some work done on it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that in this year's budget?
I hope it to be in this year's budget, '24, so I can get it done.
So, when you say, I don't know what it means by, I hope it is. I mean, is it, does it, do you determine that you're gonna take what's, what you've got budgeted for projects like this?
Yes, sir.
And get it done? Or do you need an additional?
No, it's in there.
It's in there, okay. And what do you, what do you think we need to stay ahead of the grass? Grass is just a headache at this time. Can't get enough bodies. Do we need to rate, do we need to increase the entry pay? Would that help or not really? If it would help, how much would we need to raise it, you think?
Look, I don't think it's gonna help, Paul. If you increase the entry salary, I think it's gonna help to a small minimum because you're still not gonna get the experienced people that comes in with the experience of cutting grass. The reason for it, I try to stay in touch with a lot of contractors that are in the lawn business, and only because then I try to get them to give me a quote on certain areas to cut. And some of the areas, they not interested in it because they don't have enough people. They can't gather enough people to expand their business further.
Okay, and that would've been my next question. Then, can we, if we're saving some money on personnel, can we farm some of this, this cutting out? And what I just heard you say is, man, some areas they're not interested in because they don't have...
I've called a contractor to take a look at the cemetery because the cemetery is an animal by itself.
Right.
And most people don't even wanna talk to you about it. Just got through talking to the second one, and he told me flat out, no, he wasn't interested no matter what it paid.
Think concrete roads, concrete panels. Can we get any, any of these concrete panels replaced? I know the county, usually we kinda partner with the county, they'll help with asphalt roads. But I think the last time we looked at concrete panels, they didn't want to have anything to do with that. So...
Not the county, but the only thing I can suggest is that we make it into a project and take either a neighborhood or a section of a neighborhood at a time.
Yeah, I mean, I just know it's very expensive, and I know some, probably all of us have concrete roads somewhere, but, okay.
Councilman, one of the tabs that I just would like to point out to you because it hadn't come up yet, that's the capital list.
I'm getting there.
Back.
Right, I'm getting there.
Under capital projects, actually.
Gotcha.
So, you'll see in that, in that tab, that there's, Public Works has $1.6 million in capital requests.
Okay, thank you.
Including a lot of lawnmowers.
All right. So, let me, let me get to capital projects, just to... Okay. All right, solid questions I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
All right, Mr. Glavin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Director, I mean, I'm looking at here, your budget is increasing by $2.3 million. That's a pretty significant amount, and that's good. Going back to other contractual service, which I heard that a lot of this is because of, what was increasing again? That contributed to the increase in contractual services? Sanitation? Or I thought you said it was lights, contractual services?
Well, contract, they all fall in there. I thought you were talking about the total.
No, no.
Yeah, no, the $96,000 is for lights that we lease for Mississippi Power.
So, of the $90,671 increase, 96,000 of that is for the lights that are increasing. Of course, there must be something else decreasing. So, of the 896,936 that is contractual service, how much is that for outside grass cutting? How much is earmarked for outside grass cutting, outside contractors?
What I do is try to run the grass service through the contractual services. And it's, if we get a good price, a good quote, that's satisfactory, then we try to set them up on a contract.
I understand that. But of the 896,936 that's in the budget for 2024, how much of that are we anticipating is gonna be for those outside contractors that we're gonna tell them, we can't cut the ditches, we need y'all to come cut the ditches?
Right now, maybe $100,000.
$100,000?
$100,000.
That helps, Director. Thank you. Getting back to your equipment, I heard you say you've never had some of this equipment before. So, some areas, maybe a lot of areas, they, you do a good job cutting the shoulder of the road, but we can't, we seem to not be able to get down in the ditches to really clear those out. And I'll use Hudson Cron for example. When you go outside the city limits, somebody is using something when you pass out of the city limits to clean those ditches because they're almost as smooth as this right here on, you know, in front of me.
Yeah.
So, what do we need? Is this equipment gonna allow us to do a sharper job cleaning out those ditches a little more cleaner?
Yes. What I'm trying to get my hands on right now is what they call a flare mower. And they have what they call a 45-degree flare mower that you can have one section down in the ditch and the two sections smaller type equipment to cut the banks on the backside and the front side.
And that's in the capital outlay or the capital budget?
Yes, sir.
For this, this coming year?
Yep.
I know we inspect many of our ditches. You have somebody that inspects ditches and some of the curbs and shoulders, and they report back to you. Is there anything else we need to be doing to kinda tee that up, to issue a work order more promptly so we can get around? Because it seems like they're being inspected, maybe identified, but we're having a hard time pulling the trigger on getting them cleaned up and cleared. And it may be because we're missing some of this equipment that's necessary. But is there anything else we can do, Director?
Well, some of it is equipment, and then mainly it's manpower. Because I gotta have the manpower to operate the equipment if I get the equipment. And at the same time, I have people here already that are capable of operating that equipment. I'm just trying to train some more, the last ones that we got in, so that I can get them trained on that type of equipment. So, that's what they'll be doing from there.
Okay, I'm following you a little bit. So, my next question is this, the outside contractors, the $100,000 that we kinda have earmarked, does those contractors have the proper equipment to clean these areas and ditches properly?
Most of them do.
Okay. Okay. All right. I realize the heat, and I realize that's been a factor, and some people may not wanna, whether it's contractors or our own crew doing it, but, and I sit up here in air conditioning talking to you who's out there, you know, on the ground, boots on the ground, and I totally respect and appreciate that very much. But we gotta get, I mean, I know you, I'm preaching to the choir, but we just have to find a way, whether it's increasing this contractual service to take burden off of what you can and can't do. Hopefully, we'll get this equipment in place sooner rather than later, and, you know, try to, try to move forward.
It's funny that you say that because the day while repairing that water main out there in Woolmarket, one of our guys had a slight spell of heat.
Sure.
And so, we backed off, cut him out in the hole, cooled him down, put him under shade tree, and called a contractor.
What is the heat index today, Director? Do you know?
I've heard.
115, 120?
Yeah, about 115.
120?
And when you're working out in the sun, you know, your, your heat elevation goes up.
No, I totally respect that. Is there any kinda cooling, emergency cooling tents or anything you got there, out there on the job or nearby?
Cause usually.
A bottle of water?
Yeah, they got plenty of water, plenty of hydration and stuff to, but sometimes they get into their job and they won't take a break because you got customers waiting for the water to get back on, and that's what their, their main goal is.
Okay, thank you, Director.
Most of the questions I have have been asked by the other people for the sake of time. I'll, I'll just skip over that. The only thing I wanna say is I can't stress enough the importance of the grass, the ditches, the culverts getting cleaned. These are the basic things that our constituents hit us on over and over and over again. And, and so I just want to see in this budget, an effort from, from the council, the administration, to invest in this budget to make sure that those things are taken care of. So that's all. We'll move to, what do y'all wanna cover next?
Let me sum up, let me sum up real quick.
Okay.
The Public Works budget for this year is 2.3 million dollars higher than the previous year. It includes a minus one in terms of employees. And, and it includes 1.6 million dollars. That, that, that total budget includes 1.6 million dollars in capital that have been requested.
Cap, say that again?
Capital, 1.6 million for Public Works.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to, do y'all wanna cover Parks and Rec? Or, y'all wanna go Parks and Rec now? Okay, all right, Ms. Bell. George, thank, thank you, Billy Ray. We'll start, George had to step, step out. We'll start with Ms. Newman. I'm going to, get me some drink. Can I have one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I got your input.
One right here.
And I, I didn't have time before the meeting to change the budget. Sherry and I have talked about it, and we talked about pulling together a capital project for Hiller Park improvements.
Mm-hmm.
The funding is available, we just need to pull together the project.
Okay.
Because it's a, it's a whole bunch of, as you know, because it came from you.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's bathrooms and.
Mm-hmm. We're getting those taken care of.
Field fields and lights and.
Mm-hmm. I would just like to see an itemized budget on the capital project so we know we're working towards something, whether, whatever amount you wanna come up with and tackle project-wise, you know?
That was, that was a rough estimate. It could be more too. That's just me getting with constituents throughout the state, asking how much they pay to resurface, you know, basketball court or repurpose the bathrooms.
Mm-hmm. If we can do it all, that'd be awesome. You'd be my favorite person, Mike. Not that you're not, thank you.
Blushing.
All right, Mr. Demming?
I mean, we're in this, basically the same line of questioning. The Pops Ferry Park, we've talked about numerous projects that we need to do out there.
Mm-hmm.
Where are we at? We talked about capital projects being created for some of these things. I know we need some, we need some coverings for the dog park. We also need some other amenities, like the, I can't remember what you call it? The, the athletic things for the dogs?
Big style benches, jumps, whatever, yeah.
Right. Do we have any cost projections on what we need to set aside or to earmark for those types of projects?
I sent something to Mike and told him it'd be about 15,000 dollars.
And for?
For a few amenities and shade structure.
Okay, 15K would cover both of those asks?
Maybe 20K, to be honest, you know? Do you want another shade structure out there?
Well, I know we don't have the covers on the ones. We have the poles out there. We don't have covers, so we'd like to get those covered and get benches for those.
More benches?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I just gave Mike the cost for the Pops Ferry, the Dog Park lights. It's either 18,000 for them to go in there and replace the lights that are out. Or the leasing program, which is, they wanna cut back the poles because they're ba, they're baseball poles. They wanna cut them back and put the LED, but that's like 360 dollars a month lease.
And that, 360 dollars covers all the lights or 360 dollars per light?
No, no, the 300 a month is just for the dog park.
Right, but that's just, that's for the lights? That's to go, that's to cut down the poles, change them from halogen to LED and, and maintain those LED lights?
Yep, and the other quote was just replacing the, the lights with LED.
And that's not including cutting them down? That's leaving the high baseball lights?
No.
No what?
Say that again?
Is, the, the 18,000 that you said is, is just to change to the LED bulbs? Does that include cutting them down?
No.
Okay, so we're still gonna have extremely high lights?
Mm-hmm.
With LED bulbs? Would that be adequate, the LED to light at that height? Or is it necessary or unnecessary?
Yeah, I think Mississippi Power is, I don't think it's necessary. We've never had any complaints other than lights are gonna, lights being out.
Okay.
And then on the soccer fields, I spoke with Mike. We have the International Field, which we're trying to get ready now for soccer because they're gonna overlap because of the complex being improved. So we're getting those fields ready. Trying to get some, some of the metal halo lights that are out at the complex that we're not gonna be using. Fix those lights, let those work, get on the North Field. Replace just those light poles over there, leave the Big Field without lights. And let the adults do what they do. And if they wanna rent and play at night, then, you know, they can call and, and schedule a time and rent it.
Referring to the, the Big Field, is the field closest to the Dog Park?
Yes.
So we don't have a plan to replace those lights out there?
We do, but I'm just making a suggestion of not replacing them and let them, you know, if they wanna rent them, let them put them, you know, let them rent them. It costs a lot of money, and they're, and I'm not saying it's all adults. We have a group out there that is, has just been destroying that complex. Had calls Monday from a citizen about them cursing, being out there till 11:30 on the field at the International side, fighting.
Well, I, I think we should address that problem. I don't think that not putting the lights up because somebody is going to act in a manner that we don't desire is the wrong way to go. I think that we have tons of Little League groups, tons of Pop Warner, Little League football that go out there, and after the summer, the sun goes down considerably early, and those lights are necessary for these youth groups to practice and, and partake in activities on that field.
They practice therein at the complex, but just looking at ways to save the money and get some fields playable and ready now.
And I think getting them ready now is one thing, but I don't think it's by, by pushing off at the wayside another field. Mr. Mayor, I don't know how you feel about lighting these fields back up or where we're gonna go with it. Did we get the two towers down or the two lights that saw the Osprey nest on it?
I called the Jackson County Rescue to see if they could be removed, and they're gonna go out there and look.
Okay. Where are we at on lighting that, that sports complex area back up, the Pops Ferry Sports Complex?
Well, you know, we.
The choice of leasing or it was like?
Yeah, I think we decided to lease was the best scenario, and I'm not sure with the, with the total 300.
Do you remember, Mike, what the cost was to lease out at Pops Ferry? It was like 84, 84,000 a month, yes. Or 500 to 800,000 for Moscow or any lighting company to come in there and replace all the lights, the ballast?
And then you said the lease option with Mississippi Power was?
Mississippi Power would do it, we'd just lease it back. I mean, that's.
10 years.
Yeah, I think that's 300, 400,000 impact is what I would.
Yep, they'll handle all the maintenance, set up everything. But it'd be able to be controlled from, you know, computers, phones, to.
Councilman Demming, I just wanna chime in on one development. So AJ Holloway Sportsplex is slated to begin work. And the soccer teams won't have a place to practice because a lot of them do practice out there at AJ Holloway Sportsplex. They were trying to pivot to go out to the Pops Ferry Sportsplex, but if they don't have lights, they can't practice when it gets dark. So I think it's even more important and critical that we look at a remedy. I just thought I'd offer that.
I'm, I'm gonna schedule a meeting with the mayor, we're just getting our figures together. But I wanted to go ahead and use some of the baseball lights from the complex, the metal halo lights, because they hardly make those anymore, they're like a thousand dollars apiece now, and transfer those over to the International Field and at least get those fields ready for our soccer league.
Okay, I mean, that's a short-term Band-Aid, and I'm okay with that. But if you would meet with the mayor, because I think we need a long-term approach for this, for this facility. Now, I yield my time and return to the mayor and Ms. Bell. At a later date after you guys meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Tisdale?
Thank you. On, under Parks and Recreation on page two, there at the top, under Personnel Services, this is account number 6010. There's an increase of 90,000 dollars. And I don't, I'm assuming there's more than, it's gotta be more than one person in this division or... I'm not sure how to term that, or maybe it's under the Director's office. So there may be a number of employees beside the Director under that.
Assistant Director's being transferred under there, and then Paula Knight, who's gonna be the Secretary, has been transferred out of Aquatics into 411 Admin.
Okay, so, so you're adding people to, moving people from one, one department to another, more or less? Okay, so that's a personnel transfer.
The budget shows a net increase of two, two, two bodies in Parks and Rec in this budget.
Okay, thank you. All right, then on page, really not page five, a couple of comments. We really need, you have beautification, right?
Mm-hmm.
Just for a point of reference, if somebody says, who cuts the grass? It depends on where it is, the, the site in the city. Could be Public Works, could be a contractor, could be Parks and Recreation. Do you have enough personnel to have litter teams that just pick up litter all day? Do you have the personnel to do that? You really?
No, we don't.
You, you need additional bodies to do that because?
That one, and plus, like you said, there's two extra. We were putting in two extra maintenance workers so that we could do, we do a lot of logistics.
Right.
Set up the civic center, it's just slammed full.
I can imagine, yeah.
And we were planning on trying to use those also to at least pick up three times a week at the parks and, you know, playgrounds and things. But the entire city, no.
Well, I, I just know that this, wait, wait patiently, I appreciate, thank you for raising your hand, but I know this was a concern last year, this year. Mr. Mayor, you had a comment?
Yeah, yeah, I do have a comment.
Fire away.
Oh, proceed. We've explored some things that may be possible, may not be possible. But you can get, you know, for seven months out of the year, you hire full-time people, okay? And they may wanna have three months to do what they wanna do. But we need to, you know, lose specifically to clean those byways and, and, and those things that we need cleaned. We haven't done that, you know, we've hired them full-time for the whole year. And I don't know that it would be the right thing to do to overstaff for three months out of the year, but that may something, may wanna explore that. There may be some people.
I think that's a great, I think that's a great idea. But again, I know with crews like that, my guess is you have, they have to have some supervision, which means.
Well, that would be, you know, ju, just like the, the prisoner and the things, you know, that we had explored before.
Well, anything we can do to reduce litter for, it just seems to be.
We've reduced some of the things that we did, not, not on a nickel, that, I said Parks and Rec and, and, you know, as far as Highway, Highway 90 from Porter Avenue all the way to the bridge. You, you won't see any of those green things or palmettes growing out of the ditches because that, that was a two, a three-day effort, I think, what was it, one day? But we could do it three, in, in four or five other places. But we do need some horsepower or some creativity on how to get those things done.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking litter, whether it's, you know, and like you said, temporary or seasonal hires or whatever, whether it's high school kids who wanna pick up litter in the afternoon for 10, 12 bucks an hour or something, just, what, we just?
Well, the situation with retirement and all of that, and I think with full-time anyhow, we crossed some rounds, we need to be careful with.
Well, okay, so you're on that, I appreciate that. The only other thing I, I have is, they have some beautiful exercise equipment out at, is it O'Handlon Park, Mr. Lawrence? Beautiful, painted green, durable. Went out, I looked at them, I touched them, I actually got on one, and can I get something like that at Pennzoil Park?
We're working on the water, okay, we're working on the water.
They get them starting early since it took so long to get a water fountain.
Water's working, don't they?
And I'm hoping, you know, before my term is up in two years, we could maybe get some exercise equipment out there.
At one point, we had it funded, but.
Is there enough money in your budget to do this? This would be a capital item, wouldn't it?
Not right now, no, sir. And then I was just thinking there, because it's so filled with trees and all, we would just maybe put four different units just around the track they're walking so they can work on their arms or, or things like that. And I've got a price, and it's like anywhere between 7,500 and 15,000, depending on how many.
Okay, could you handle that in your budget this year?
I didn't put it in my budget, no, sir.
Okay, so if we were gonna do anything in terms of exercise equipment or something or stations at Pennzoil, we'd need to add that to the budget? Okay, thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Continuing a trend, please note that other contractual services in Parks and Rec went from 143, 500 to 175,000. That's a 32, 32,000 dollar increase year over year to do more with contractors.
All right, Mr. Glavin?
Yep. First off, we're anticipating with the enhancements at AJ Holloway Sportsplex to be able to rent those fields for practices. Is that in the budget, any of those fees? I'm just asking, is it somewhere in the budget to recover the fees for renting the fields?
Mayor, that's something we're gonna have to sit down and discuss if we wanna start renting our fields.
No worries, I'm just asking, I, I look for it, and if it's not there, I understand, you know, but it, it's reasonable to expect there'll be something. It won't be significant to increase the, the overall budget, but it is significant because it may be able to cover the, the payments for a lease for lights or something like that.
Yeah, I just, I think we need to sit down with all the improvements that are being made. I think we need to charge people when we turn on those lights, and that's at all our facilities, parks, if we can.
No, I'm with you, Director, I'm trying to finish up. The President wants me to hurry up here, so. I, I heard you say that we could take the lights while the fields are being re-turfed and not, not being used. We can take all those lights out and quickly probably transition them over to another park, correct?
Yeah, that's a suggestion.
Okay, that, that sounds like a reasonable and logical suggestion. And, and then if we activate one of these lease agreements, once they finish turfing the fields, we can, or while we're turfing the fields, they may be able to put, put some more of these lights up. And the LED lights, I noticed in electricity, there's a 15,000 dollar increase in electricity. Total electricity in your budget for the year is 530,000. That includes the, all the lights, I'm assuming, in Parks and Rec at all the parks? And, and, and as well as the buildings and offices and all that stuff? Am I correct to assume that?
Yeah, Parks Facilities, Causeway.
Sure, sure, but, but, but those metal halo lights or whatever they are that you, you referenced, you said they draw a lot of power, probably 50 times or more than the LED lights. So by converting to the LED lights, we would be actually reducing some of this expense down and, and maybe saving 15 or 30,000 dollars, which again, can cover some of these lease agreements for improving the lights.
It should.
Okay. I just got a couple more points. Scoreboards. Have we done an assessment on scoreboards? I know we had a few issues last year with. I know we had a few issues last year with, uh, motherboards going out, sound systems not working. We have a lot of promoters that are excited about what we're doing, they're standing on ready to pull the trigger and, and, uh, get all these big tournaments coming to Biloxi instead of Gulfport, Ocean Springs, Pascagoula, DeArville and other areas. What shape is our scoreboards in and our sound systems?
Correct, for the most part, um, all the scoreboards are working with the exception of, um, one has to be replaced and one was never installed on Field One. And then there's some, um, you, we, I call them the brains of the scoreboard, where you keep the score and all with the, the module pad, um, we need a couple of those, but we just haven't done a good job of keeping up with things out there and then, um, as far as the sound system, we repaired two of the press boxes and there's three more that need to be done, so, um, I think it's probably about seven or eight thousand more dollars.
All right, so Director, and I'm gonna finish with this, some of the other departments have two-point-six million dollar increases, three-point-something million dollar increases, two-point-two, yours is only three hundred thousand or so. I, I would propose that we look at increasing your budget to cover these much-needed expenses and we know they're cost-effective because we talked about the cost savings with other revenue sources with renting the field and saving electricity, which converting from those high-energy use bulbs to very, very efficient LED lights, so I, I would ask the administration to look at what we need to do to get these, the dog park, Hiller Park and the Sportsplex kinda up and ramped up so we can quickly take advantage to what, and not lose out to the competition. Some of these tournaments that book, uh, they'll book at these other fields three or four years in a row and if we miss that opportunity, it could be a, a, a lot of money lost, so I'll end with that, but I would ask, uh, Mike, that maybe you increase the budget by another, I mean, I'm tallying these up a little bit, it starts to add up, um, but I think.
Sherry and I, I spoke before the meeting today and, uh, she's, she's gonna hurry up and get us, get us some quotes for scoreboards and we can get that in the budget before we go.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
George, do you have anything for?
Yeah, I had a couple of things, uh, on the O'Reilly equipment, Paul, what we did, we replaced that, it was already out there, but that wasn't new, so it was replacement, so that was a part of the thing. We replaced a lot of playground equipment in Ward One and we still decide on what we're gonna do at, uh, Miramar Park, was the most visible park we have in the city and that piece of equipment is bad. Have you got permission to remove that piece of equipment?
No, I reached out to Mike and told him we need to, um, see about moving them in the next, um, two weeks because they're getting very unsafe.
And I know we've, uh, talked about.
Miramar.
Miramar. What we decided on Miramar, as you recall, was you're gonna get your maintenance guys to go look at all the equipment to be sure there's no safety issues, remove any safety issues and so forth, and then we're gonna put, um, a modified playground in the budget for this next year. Modified being a, I think we talked about a swing set and a.
We were, because of the location, we kinda need to, to move, just get rid of that, um, play equipment. It, it doesn't last as long because it's out there by the saltwater, but we just need to go back with another three-base swing, that'd give you two, three-base swings, put some picnic tables underneath the shade structure and maybe one slide, and I was just, um, looking at, um, forty thousand, I just got a cost for the playground and it was like sixteen or seventeen thousand.
Well, he talking about Mike's gonna go out there and check it because some of his stuff's broken and they can't use it, people just gonna get hurt, so when you gonna do that? Yeah, that's a safety issue. Who, who you and Hav do that?
Yeah, I just, I just need approval to, to remove it from there in Megas.
Say again?
I just asked Mike for approval with the email, he probably hasn't seen it because he's been in and out, for approval to remove Miramar Playground, not the swing, Miramar Playground and Megas Playground.
All right. And, uh, they brought up a good question about A.J. Holloway Park, the sports complex.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that whole thing's going down, so we're not gonna have any, uh, baseball, soccer and the thing for next year?
No, we're doing football this year and soccer, but we'd be, be doing it at the complex and, um, Pops Ferry. Baseball, from what I understand, they're trying to get it ready in six months, so it may be a late start in April and not in, um, March, but at least we'll get some games played and they'll be able to at least, you know, buy for district state.
You know, do we have a backup plan in case that don't happen?
Uh. Megas Field, huh, no, I'm working with, um, Ms. Martin is gonna help me get Hiller Park back in some shape, the fields and so, and then Zavaro is in, is in good shape, so, but I, I'm, I look at our numbers increasing for baseball this year. They can, they can play with a, a, a later date, Mr. George, they usually play, they usually start like May tenth, fifteenth. If they come back the end of, of March or the first of April, they'll still can play through June. They just choose to end in May, but I think they will extend it and play until June because, um, tournaments and district tournaments, Cal Ripken and all that, does not start until July.
No, I mean, just like you said, they gotta fix the drainage for sure for soccer and they gotta take care of the sinking poles, they said they're not sinking, they're sinking.
They're doing.
Baseball fields, yeah, so, somebody gotta pay attention to it and quit by, going around the corner, say, what are we gonna look at, we got, no, those are two major problems, that's the sports complex, before you do anything else, you won't be playing anything now.
Yeah, all that's in there.
Right, so, the next thing, uh, I'm gonna ask Mike, we hit five-point-seven million in contract work for Public Works, you said, is that for Public Works, the five-point-seven million? Contract workers.
I heard the mayor say that number and I'm not sure where he got it.
And then you said this is an increase here, so are we actually accomplishing anything with these contract workers? You're talking about six million, six million dollars in contract workers, so what are we gaining by doing this? I mean, y'all need to let us know if it's working or not working.
I'll give you example of what we gained from it, we don't have to do all those lots in those main, um, like under Interstate I-ten, so that allows me with the crews that I have right now to do the logistics on Fridays, go pick them up on Mondays, because we don't have as much area to cut. We still got quite a bit, but not as much, so.
Well, we definitely want it to look good, you know, I don't get the streets, Howard Avenue and Highway Ninety, it doesn't matter, it needs to be clean, I mean, not all your job, but I'm just saying.
No.
You know, we, the people wanna know, we fully have all this money, then we know what we doing. That's what we, is y'all in budget, are y'all taking care of things right now? And that's why we asking these questions.
My personal opinion, people just don't wanna work. People don't, my personal opinion, a lot of people just don't wanna work. So.
Contract work, somebody wanna work.
The jobs are there.
We've used contractors now for, this is the third consecutive year that I recall that we, since we started it and we pulled something like thirty, thirty of lots away originally and then we added some more and then we added a second contractor and I think that number of lots is somewhere around seventy right now and that, that really frees, frees up Parks and Rec and, and, uh, Public Works to focus on key areas like the Division Street Corridor and not have to go run all over town mowing vacant lots.
And you said it had a plus two.
And I think we probably need to do more of it.
On, uh, the parks, you said that we have two more than we had before, I know some of them retired, so how many people did you hire?
Yeah, I've asked.
We got a plus two.
I've asked for two more, um, in beautification so that we can, with all the logistics that we have, especially at Civic Center, um, there's probably four dates left in twenty-twenty-four already at the Civic and we're responsible for setting up tables, chairs, dance floor, so hiring those two will help free up, and it keep us from taking away from the grass cutting.
Well, you had, you had the one man was, was with you for a long time, he retired and you replaced him or you had you put somebody else in that position?
What?
I said the one who used to run the leagues and stuff like that.
Oh, athletic?
Yeah.
Yes, I just, um, um, hired on someone and he starts tomorrow.
All right, okay. Okay, the only thing that I have to, um, add is I know that last year we ran into some issues with not enough space when it came to gyms and stuff, is there any way that we can look into securing some gyms that aren't city gyms through, whether it's schools or private or whatever, just in case we run it and what, not waiting until, oh, we have too many people, um, making sure that we have the space if we do run into that issue again so that we can handle everyone that, um, you know, wants to play in the leagues. Is that something we can look into and, and see? And I know that we had the, the new one that's gonna be over here, that's gonna be coming online at some point, but not for this year, um, but having adequate facilities lined up, and I know that other cities do this. I, I played in leagues growing up and, and it wasn't always a city gym that we played in, it was, it was school gyms and all kinds of things, so if we can look at that, just in ca- just to have that as a backup if we fill up and.
We are.
overflow, and then that's the only thing, um, that I would like to add and I know that we have a lot of stuff Eagle Point, but that has nothing to do with this budget, that's stuff that's already allocated, we're just sort of waiting on getting.
And Christine, yeah, I spoke with Christine, we're just waiting to see how, what the lights gonna cost first and then we'll start with the, the picnic tables, the benches and, but let's get the lighting.
Okay, and, um, so that, that'll be all for, um, today, we thank you for your time, um.
On that gym, we'd have to set that up with blocks of high, you talking about?
Yeah, or, or, I mean, they, almost every Biloxi school has a gym and, and, I mean, it doesn't have to be huge, um, seating or anything like that, just an area for if we don't have enough room to take kids, we had kids signed up last year that couldn't play and so if we don't have enough room, have a backup to where we can, you know, rent a gym from a school or arrange to, to use some of the gyms or something.
Yeah, we have one gym right now and that's Snyder Center and my goal is to increase the numbers and bring adult programs back, so my plan was to get with, um, Marcus Bedro and ask about renting out, you know, the junior high, Michelle Gym or something, we have to have more than one gym if I can, if, if my numbers are to increase.
I mean, that would be the.
That's just renting, that's just a matter of renting.
Yeah, I just think that everybody, every child, especially children, every child that wants to play in the city should, should have that opportunity, just, um.
We had to turn people down last year because we only had the one gym.
Okay, so we'll end, um, with that, uh, we have to change over for the council meeting, give them time to change things over, but, um, do, we don't have a meeting scheduled for next week as far as a council meeting, do y'all want to do a meeting, uh, uh, budget workshop next week?
No, that's, uh, election day.
That's, and I will not be here, but.
You need to leave that alone.
But, um, we can do it, we, we can do it another day if we need to.
Yeah, that's, I don't care.
What would y'all?
I wouldn't do it on Tuesday though.
Mr. Leonard?
Well, when the next scheduled meeting was gonna be the fifteenth, but I.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just wait and do it on the fifteenth and that's a one-thirty meeting and we'll just schedule it for following our regularly scheduled council meeting?
One, one thing I would caution is one of our most heated and, and involved, um, subject is the non-departmental, and we gotta make sure we leave, right now in the schedule, it shows, it shows August twenty-second as budget workshop with council if needed, I think, I think that needs to be.
Yeah, we'll probably have to do that and we can probably, uh, we only have a couple of more departments and I know we may wanna circle back around on some of them, um, but we could probably finish up departments, departmental and then go to, into non-departmental on the fifteenth and then circle back around on whatever we need to on the.
After the meeting, we had a insurance meeting.
On?
On the fifteenth.
So are y'all doing that prior to the?
Afterwards.
Okay, so do we wanna do the budget workshop prior to then?
That's up to y'all, I was just telling you about after the, on August fifteenth is our next insurance meeting.
And that's immediately following the council meeting?
Right, it's a lot of the, all the heads, department heads in it come.
Okay, can we do?
Right, Paul, but you said it.
It's scheduled there for three o'clock, I mean, we, we can move the time of that insurance meeting, I'd like to keep it, I'd like.
I'd like to keep the date of that insurance meeting, if we have to move the time, we've got enough time to notify everybody, uh, so if you wanna have a workshop, a budget workshop following the council meeting.
Y'all can move that to before or?
Yeah, probably move it afterwards for, uh, George and I and Kenny. But you gotta make sure all the people can come. Okay, so we'll have a workshop following the council meeting and immediately after that workshop, we'll have an insurance group meeting and I'll notify those folks.
All right, so we'll do, uh, our next budget workshop will be the fifteenth immediately following the council meeting.
And on the August, August the twenty-second, then we'll do the non-departmental, I need to be sure to get the word out because there are a lot of people that usually attend that particular council meeting, non-departmental, it's a lot of interest.
I think that we'll be able to get into that though, um.
On the fifteenth?
Yeah, on the fifteenth, I mean, we only have a couple more departments to cover and, and.
Community Development and Engineering and you've really done.
Yeah, I thi- I think we can get into it, um, we might not be able to finish it, but I think we could get into it and then wrap everything up on the twenty-second, finish it up and then circle back around on everything else.
Okay, I just, that, that works for me if it works for you.
If it work for you, okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
A vote. Second.
All right, all in favor?
First by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale, five zero.
Nathan, hey Nathan, you know, one thing I'd, I would encourage the council to do.